Okay, good evening. My name is Tony Frank Langia. Board of Appeals. We have a board of five people here tonight. Brian Massa, Leonard Coats, Corey Whiteside, and I think Christine Razada.
No, she's not yet. Uh, we're gonna just shut down the microphone, so go over to the test speaker.
Yeah. You want to work first, Christine or?
It should be good. Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna go.
There you go.
We're gonna go ahead.
You're back. We didn't have the video, obviously. We were just trying to fix it. So this room was on the screen.
All right, as indicated in the agenda for this meeting, this is an in-person meeting with remote access by Zoom video and telephone conference. Remote being access was provided posted on the town website for the commission members applicants and other interested persons to participate. For those listening, I would ask that you mute the device or phone if you are able to do so, so that we don't get any background noise. When it's time for individuals to speak, I'll ask you to unmute your phone, identify yourselves. May be patient in what you're done. Very important reminders to everyone, first, every time you speak, state your name and title for the record. Certainly, the microphone, and we must be careful not to speak over one another, so that everyone who is listening can hear what is being said and have a clear record. As indicated on the agenda, public hearings will be heard from each application of applicants presenting their requests and responding to questions. After the public hearings have concluded, we will go into the regular meeting, which remains open to the public for listening, but no new testimony can be given at the board's deliberative on ourselves. Basically, that means that if you have anything to say, say it during the new portion of the meeting, when we go into the, when we go into the regular meeting. Also, this meeting is being.
Chairman Frank Langia.
Present.
Commissioner Tubbs.
Present.
Commissioner Mattson.
Present.
Commissioner Razado. He was intending to join, but he's not joining yet.
Maureen, I, I was able to hear previously, I haven't heard anything the last 30 seconds or so.
I was just going to say the same thing.
I can hear you now.
Nope, that's me, Kristen.
Oh, Kristen, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I can't hear anything.
I can't hear either.
From the chambers.
No. It seemed to have stopped recording or something.
Right.
Testing microphone.
Yep, we can hear you.
Can you hear now?
Yes.
Okay, I'll repeat the agenda item for everybody. Still okay, right, Attorney Penter?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, yeah.
Thank you. ZB A 2022-15-0 Chamberlain Highway, map 14-1, block 12, block 13. Casmerus Karwoski is appealing for Brolin zoning regulations. 15A1, the order of the zoning enforcement officer regarding commercial vehicles and equipment on the vacant residential property in the R21 zone. This was opened at the 10/25, October 25, 2022 meeting, speaking for the application.
Yes, I am, Your Honor, Attorney Richard Penter, representing Mr. Karwoski. I'm happy to report that they did close on a property in Sunnington that I think I had mentioned to you at the previous hearing. They closed on that property about two weeks ago, and they will be able to move their equipment. They have started moving some equipment. In fact, today, there was a large trailer that had been there. The trailer, as of this afternoon, is off the property. A lot of the other equipment has, has been moved off the property. There is still a little bit left to go. There was a situation earlier this week, I believe, where my client was doing some work out by the Chamberlain Highway in order to do some grading out in the front of the property with an eye towards when he does subdivide. Some of the material from the front was brought towards the back for chipping or, or grading. The town, I believe town staff did come down, and that was ceased, but we are making quite a bit of progress. In fact, today, quite a bit of progress was made. In fact, this old trailer that sat below Bob Belicky's house was, was removed as well from, from the property and brought to the new location in Sunnington. So they are making some progress. I can't say it's 100%. They've had the, the new property for only two weeks, but we are trying to move forward on it at this point.
Did this commission provide any kind of enrage to get this done?
Well, I believe we continued it, Mr. Chairman, for, to this meeting. I think I indicated it probably will all be done by this meeting, but hopefully by the next. They are working on it. I mean, ideally, they'd like to keep some snow removal equipment there just to, when the winter comes, but you know, whatever, I mean, obviously, I mean, there always has been some equipment on this property, but obviously, there, there was more there that's gonna be removed. If it's the commission's position that it has to all go, then I'll tell my client it'll all have to go. He was trying to keep some snow removal equipment there for the winter time, and eventually, there would be some grading, but if that equipment has to be removed, I, I understand that, too.
Well, it's no longer being used as a, a location to provide sales for other projects, is it?
Well, the only project that's gonna go on there is when he eventually brings the subdivision application. There'll have to be some grading done.
Right, but I mean, what I'm saying is, is that if it's only being used, it's being used to subdivide, if there's gonna be a subdivision there, then I, what I can see, it doesn't make any sense to have, I was there twice this weekend. And it doesn't make sense to have, I was there yesterday, I was there Sunday, doesn't make any sense to have you know, four or five bulldozers, a couple of backhoes.
No, I agree. Like I said, they made some progress today. In fact, they got the trailer out today that was in the back. I mean, they've only had the other property for a couple of weeks. It's not that easy to get it all off, but if we need to get it all off, we'll get it off. I, I understand that. No, they don't need, you're right, they don't need all the excavating equipment. They don't intend, that was never there, they're not intending to keep that there anyway, but they just have that time to move it all in the short period of time that they bought the other property. The other property consists of a, a yard and it's allowed to store construction materials and an existing house. I think they've finally been able to start moving things out this week to that property, because they just closed on it two weeks ago.
So, obviously, I sent the order, so I'm supporting my order. It is considered a vacant parcel from the standpoint of the zoning requirements and in a residential zone, so they have their order they received was with regard to vehicles as well as equipment and unsightly materials. So vehicles and equipment would not be able to be stored on a property as a storage yard. That's not an allowed use in the zone, and unsightly materials are never permitted. You have the regulations with regard to unsightly materials. So I believe they should continue to work to restore the property to a vacant condition until they have an approved application and are moving forward with permitting for any development of the parcel.
Well, that's.
Now is a vacant parcel, and therefore, I would ask that the commission uphold the order on, we can, the staff, the zoning officer has the discretion to work with applicants as they are violators, I should say, as they work to come into compliance, which is what we had tried to do with this applicant, or with this property owner rather, a number of months ago, as well as over the last several years. And in, during each time period, they did clean up and start to move things, but then stalled, and the order was a result of a stalled effort. They had started in June, or May, in June, and did some work, but by the time the order was sent at the end of August, it was because of very big longer time period where more equipment and materials came in than, and they weren't going back out. So again, I don't think the order is incorrect, and therefore, would encourage the board to uphold my order. However, I, should the applicant continue, or the property owner continue to clean up this site and work towards reasonably quick resolution of getting the vehicles and equipment to their new site that they've obtained, that can hold the vehicles, equipment, and unsightly materials, or throw it out, or whatever else they're gonna do with it, as long as it's not on the vacant residential parcel in Portland, that then staffed work with them and not escalate the order to the next level until such time as it needs to be escalated because they failed forward progress.
And if you escalated to the next level, does that mean that the, that the property owner would probably be fighting?
Yes, citations would be the next level.
Okay. Well, that makes a lot of sense, and I guess that, I'm not trying to wash my hands, I better wash the commission's hands with it, but it would make a lot of sense for the property owners to work with the zoning enforcement officers. And I think that this commission should uphold the zoning enforcement officers' findings and, and then leave the discretion of the zoning enforcement officer to move forward with any other kind of fine or anything else that needs to be taken care of, but I, I don't see how we could not uphold the zoning enforcement officers' you know, decision with this, with this, with this particular case. Does anybody have any thoughts?
Perhaps, I mean, we have extended consideration of this. I think we have one more extension that we could invoke, but we have a December meeting scheduled.
No, there is no December meeting.
There's no December meeting. Either way, I think that the, the appeal is before us. I'll have to wait until the closing here, so we can close here, but after I have any other questions, I'll, I'll take a motion to close this. Any other question?
Commissioner Mattson, we put a hard deadline on this, or at least to the next level?
You could, I believe you could have the CEO not take further actions the longer they have forward progress. A certain date that instructs us to look at it. It's really the, the charge of the zoning board of appeals, as I understand it, is to determine whether the order is correct, and then the CEO deals with the action of finding or or another order or what have you.
Good point. Can I make a motion to close this portion?
Do you have a second? Sorry. Okay, I wanted to note that Christine has joined on as well.
Oh, good.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I, I, I don't have video, but I'm here. I can, I can see the map, though. I can see the screen.
Okay. We have a motion made to both the hearing and the application. Motion made in second at all in favor. Maureen, can you take the roll? I, I. I.
I'm gonna abstain, because I didn't hear anything.
Okay. Next application is ZB A 2022-16, Woodlawn Road, map 10-4, block 83C, lot 43. Danielle Whitman, Caliber Holdings LLC, doing business as Caliber Collision Centers, is requesting a motor vehicle use location approval for a general repair facility for Brolin zoning regulations, 11R, speaking for the application. Come on up after my call. Please sign in wherever you can.
Hi, Danielle Whitman, I'm Senior Integration License and Coordinator for Caliber Collision. We would just like permission to, to use the site at 51 Woodlawn automotive or auto vehicle repair facility, which is what it has been. We're, we're purchasing the business, but we don't plan on changing the use or any major structures.
Well, the judge and lawyer can retire before me. We made, we made an agreement back in 1985.
Move someplace warm. But yeah, the business itself will run pretty much as it has.
Under the same franchise?
No, no, it would be Caliber Collision versus Carstar. I think also, it would still be auto body maintenance repair.
No car sales? Okay, that was easy.
Yeah, and he signed it, any changes that, that's on our vendors to apply for.
Well, it's not on vendors, it would be on whoever is running your business in there to apply for.
But whoever's doing the work will be.
It's where it's on.
Yeah, C K.
So, if I may, just for the record, we, in my experience since Carstar went in, we've not had any complaints or any issues with the operations. And I would, it was a car location previous to Carstar as well.
Yeah, but it was the same locate, same people.
No, no, it wasn't.
It was Collisions World, and then they changed to Carstar.
Right, it was, that's why I said.
And Larry, Larry.
It went for longer to then just that, so they could come for an auto uses since Carstar, since they became a Carstar. However, like I said, we haven't had any issues with the property, and I would just say or with the regular permitting needed to be required, as would always be the case.
Caliber Collision is a parent company based in Texas.
Correct.
Okay. I don't have any questions. I have nothing else. You guys are just a franchise, though?
It's, no, we don't franchise.
So you're just own?
Yeah.
Close here.
I'll second that. Any discussion? I, I motion to close here, all in favor? I, thank you.
Thank you. Christine, can you still hear? Are you voting to close the hearing? You lose it?
Hello? Firefox insisted on restarting. I am so sorry. I don't know if I'm useful tonight. Can I just continue to have a stand until I, I'm here?
That's fine.
Okay.
We have two things to quote on. All right, that's okay. This is the regular meeting, ZB A 2022-15-0 Chamberlain Highway, map 14-1, block 12, block 13. Casmerus Karwoski is appealing for Brolin zoning regulations, 15A1, the order of the zoning enforcement officer regarding commercial vehicles and equipment on the vacant residential property in the R21 zone. This was opened at the 10/25, 2022 meeting. I'll make a motion to approve, uphold, uphold the, the zoning enforcement officers' decision. Any discussion on that? I would just like to add to leave it to the discretion of the zoning enforcement officer as to time it, as to when they invoke the full. Figure out, get it out, get it out or get fined.
Yes, I would just say that I think the motion should be amended, or I offer a competing motion to deny the appeal, I think, is because there's an appeal, there's an appeal of a zoning enforcement decision before us, so I think that should be the motion. It's the same thing, but.
Well, that makes sense. It makes sense that I did deal, if you like to do it that way. It's possible. You've always done it the other way, but that's okay. It's the same thing, the same thing.
I have, I have no preference. I just, it was all right.
All right, since there's no change, I mean, do I have a second? I mean, first motion. Or we're gonna, you're gonna add that other part of, of zoning enforcement having discretion, because that was, we bring it in, I view as your motion. Oh. I think that that would make a lot of sense, and that if you are in a situation where the work isn't being done according to your specifications, then it would probably be wise to maybe start beginning of looking at fine or beginning going to the next step, so that the, so a property owner is in compliance with everything. I certainly don't wanna, I mean, I guess I was there, I, I saw the property a couple of times, and there's a boat there, too. No reason to have a boat over there if you're doing construction work there, but you know, you only need one piece of equipment if you're doing some leveling of the property for future use. Having a couple of shovels and four or five bulldozers doesn't make a lot of sense. Make your progress, though, it's, I think it's, again, leave it to discretion of the enforcement officer, that's, you got it, more. Okay, we ain't gonna let it go this time.
We have one now.
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay.
I digress.
So, we, we've got a motion made, and we've got that stipulation that Mr. Tubbs added to it. Any more discussion on that motion?
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Just a second.
I said.
You seconded it.
All in favor?
I, I.
Okay, ZB A 2022-16, 51 Woodlawn Road, map 10-4, block 83C, lot 43. Danielle Whitman, Caliber Holdings LLC, ZB A Caliber Collision Centers, is requesting a motor vehicle use location for general location approval for general repairs facility for Brolin zoning regulation 11R. I have a motion to approve this application. I made a motion, we approve the location use at this location. Second. I have a motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
I, I like.
That's approved. I just hope you guys understand, hold up the, the type of work that they did over years. I've known, I've known these guys since I opened my shop. It was a good, good crew there, good people. Good things, right? It's hard to find. I'll make a motion to close the meeting. I'll second. All in favor?
I, 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 we'll.
You guys missed the schedule, the scheduling. You gotta go on. But we closed the meeting, so I'm sorry I didn't catch it. I was doing other things.
To close the meeting? I wish for another motion to close the meeting, because we have another item on the agenda that was not there. It should be something that we need to give to the town clerk, scheduled for 19, for 2023, and I think it's the same schedule as 2000.
So, just for a point of order, can you make a motion to add the 2023 calendar to the agenda?
I would make a motion to add the 2023 calendar to the agenda, and that calendar has meetings every month except for August and December. So there's 10 meetings in 2023 on the fourth Tuesday of every month, with the exception of any special meetings that might be held and August and December meetings, which are not included as the agendas for the, for the year. This is my print. I, I printed it. I had, it's in his file somewhere, but I printed it. I forgot my copy of work, so I printed it at home and let it print while I was getting ready. It was all over the floor.
Oh, yeah.
Oh. Yeah, this looks fine. Still just worry about one or two of the day of every fall sometimes because of a fair.
We tried not, we tried hard to have it realize that there is an issue.
Yeah, it's good.
There it is. Now it's on the screen.
It's perfect.
So September is the 26th.
The point you're, the point that I was, that obviously December, you're right on these.
Yes.
Unless there's a special main call to push the appeal afterward. It's fair, the last day of February is the 17th, so we don't know, we don't know when the first day is.
Change the header on the document.
Oh, thank you.
There's a 50% chance that it's gonna be a four-day fair, 50% chance it's going back to a three-day fair.
And we have a motion to approve the calendar?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I forgot who's still on the record. I, I.
Okay. Yeah.
We've had so many long meetings recently. This year, this, it was like.
Right, Anthony?
I thought we did.
You just went into the family? No, no, you, you just went into the family?
Oh, no, we.
For the calendar, I'm sorry, I'm so particular.
We opened, we closed to.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
I.
I.